So welcome everyone, my name is Anka Angela. It's really a pleasure for me to co-host this side event together with Dr. Beril Sirmaczek here, that you can see also on the screen. This is a side event that is called AI for Space and Earth Observation and it's a special session of the School of AI. I have just a couple of slides to help me through this introduction. I hope that you can see my screen properly. To swap my display. Is it fine? Does it shows? Perfect, okay. Good, so we have today a really nice agenda and I want to thank Beril for putting together this really, really wonderful agenda. So we'll have with us today Dr. Beril Sirmaczek. She's an associate professor with Saxon University of Applied Sciences and she will give us an introduction on the School of AI in Netherlands. We will have also Professor Davistuya of APFL presenting, so giving a talk on interpretable AI and human-machine interaction. We have with us also Professor Dr. Elif Sertel of Istanbul Technical University. So welcome. She will talk about deep learning for remote sensing applications. We will have Dr. Chris Mattman of NASA JPL on AI for space exploration. And finally, a terraceing of Deep Kappa and Live AI on Learning AI for Climate. We'll have another talk from Dr. Beril Sirmaczek in between. So just to give a very brief introduction, Learning AI is something that is very, something we try to invest a lot in here in IZA. We have a number of initiatives and programs to try to get the public engaged with AI for Earth Observation. We had yesterday in the Phi Week, three sessions on AI for Earth Observation and AI for Earth Sciences. And we have prepared through the years, a number of open courses that are available online. And I tried to capture here on this slide, just to give you an impression of what we're dealing with here. So normally, when we prepare educational materials for the public, we assume that the public that we have is very familiar with our observations or they are interested in learning our observation and developing new methods, new tools, new algorithms. So the MOOCs that we've been developing so far mostly focus on how to learn, let's say, the computer science to apply it to Earth Observation. We have something new in the pipeline that I wanted to bring forward and that is, we're looking at the MOOC that is turning things around. So we assume now that we have a big community of computer scientists that we want to attract into Earth Observation, so presenting the challenges and specifics of the Earth Observation data for computer scientists. So this is something to keep an eye on and in the coming months, we'll be launching a call for proposals for this type of activity. Just a couple of words on what we, let's say, what is the umbrella of these activities? So we're doing everything as much as possible in open science framework. We consider open science to be an enabler for learning, not just AI, but also remote sensing and for advancing scientific discovery. And we really believe in learning by doing. So just to give an example of how we approach this learning by doing is by opening up resources. And you all know that the Copernicus Sentinels have a free, fully open data policy, but also encouraging reproducibility. So one example that I can give that is very, very close to my heart and very, let's say, recent is this project that we had on, together with the Commission on COVID-19 and the impacts that we can see with Earth Observation. So we tried with this project that is at large a collaborative project to bring forward to the general public information that is derived by scientific teams that have a lot of knowledge and a lot of expertise and to transform this information from something that is very high level and very scientific into something that is very accessible for the public. And then we tried to also involve the public into participating to this collaborative project. So we opened up all the resources, opened up all the data that is available through the different cloud platforms that we have. We opened up the computational resources, so we provided workspaces through the Eurodata Cube, managed workspaces with Jupyter notebooks, tutorials and documentation, so that the public can learn how to create knowledge, so how to extract information from Earth observations directly by replicating the same types of processing that a scientific team would do. So we think in these types of approaches and getting very close to the problem at hand. And you will learn a lot of things that are connected to this from the speakers today. I just want to point out that we had again these sessions yesterday at the Phi Week and we will have even more content in the Living Planet Symposium that is coming next year. So I really hope to be able to have a follow-on of this side event, maybe at the Living Planet, who knows? And that's it, I hope they will enjoy it. I welcome Dr. Beril Sirmaczek to the stage and I will end my intro here. We have a chat available, so you can just paste questions in the chat. And if you want to raise your hand, just raise your hand as an attendee and we'll give you the floor. Thank you, Beril, you have the floor.
Thank you so much for this great introduction and thank you very much, everyone, for joining us today. And thank you, all the speakers who accepted my invitation with wonderful presentations of them with AI and Earth Observation topics. So I will try to share my presentation first, very short, about what is School of AI. And I will try to use my presentation not only to promote School of AI, but hopefully to give you some inspiration about what AI activities and Earth Observation activities, maybe you can do. I hope you can see my screen right now, do you? Okay, perfect. So as Anka introduced, I'm Beril Sirmaczek. I'm an associate professor at Saxon University of Applied Sciences. It's in the east side of the Netherlands. And I'm working with Smart Cities Group and our focus is using AI, Earth Observation and other IoT data to watch the climate adaptation of cities. And the School of AI has been always a side activity that I've been carrying through. Today, I will just try to quickly introduce what it is, how it came around. And I will try to also hopefully inspire you to do similar things in your area. So how it started, the birth of it, what we are doing today. And people always ask questions like, how do you choose lectures? How do you determine levels, like, questions? So I will try to address such questions and what is the purpose and the bigger purpose of us doing this extra effort, like weekly or monthly events? And some lessons that I've learned, hopefully it can help you also. So how it started, in 2018, I was at that time working at University of Twente again in this area. That time I was wondering how to create AI lectures for my students for a new curriculum. But that time I also wished to communicate AI to locals. So any individual can learn what is AI because I was realizing that AI is coming more into our lives and people have all the rights to know what to expect from it, how to trust it. And when they use any system with AI, I think the basic knowledge should be there in anyone. They don't need to be a developer or a scientist. So I wanted to communicate AI with general public as well. So I thought, besides making my university curriculum, let's make some evening event, side events and invite local people as well. It might be also like gathering to make a community network in our local area. And just coincidence, that time there was a famous YouTuber, maybe some of you heard Siraj, and he made an announcement online. He said, "I want to make a global AI community and I want one person from each country to be the leader." And I will select one person from each country and just came up with a YouTube comment. Suddenly, I was selected as the responsible for School of AI in the Netherlands. And that time, we made a select channel for the global network. Everybody leads their own country. And shortly after, unfortunately, this gathering just disappeared. I mean, I think it was just too much to try to coordinate all the world trying to make a general curriculum. Everybody wanted to do their own thing. It didn't work with making it global that time. Why not? Maybe you can find another way to make it happen. But our local audience enjoyed it a lot and they said, "Okay, the global one is gone, but we don't want it to be gone, we want to continue with our School of AI." We said, "Okay, then we make it School of AI NL" and we continue with our Dutch School of AI. And that's how it started and started to go on for three years or more than three years now. I'm organizing these side events frequently. So far, we have more than 40 open lectures to public. We share free source code and lectures. We give away books, thanks a lot to people who sponsored us just for goodwill. And we've got hundreds of followers around the world because I'm putting all the stuff also on YouTube and putting a Zoom link for instance. Anybody can join also to our gatherings online. And we've done earlier 124-hour long no-sleep hackathon in the field of AI and healthcare as well. We've given certificates to people. And before COVID, we used to have physical gatherings with, we organized it with free drinks and food for everyone. And with pop-up quizzes, like things, we tried to make it a fun, enjoyable evening event that we made a community, I'm so happy with it. And everything is on YouTube that anybody can find it later. So that's, I started by myself, by just looking for some cafes, for instance, who can give us a place. But shortly after, Saxon University of Applied Sciences noticed that I'm doing such evening events and they said, "Why do you try to find a place every time? Why don't you use our laboratory?" And I was so much happy that they opened us a big area at the university that we can use for evening gatherings. And that's how it continued later. So nowadays, we are thinking about making it hybrid because people are joining on Zoom all around the world and local people want to meet each other again after COVID time, hopefully when things are getting a little bit easier. So I think we will continue hybrid because we love to access to our global audience as well. So our purpose has been, as I said, just giving the basic AI knowledge to general public to introduce it, but also to develop a healthy relationship with AI. When AI is in our lives all the time, you've got an app, gets a satellite data, shows something with AI algorithms, how much they should trust? If they have an idea about how AI algorithms are trained and working, maybe they can have a general idea about what kind of expectations they should have. I believe that also aligns with the European Commission policies on AI, to have the public within the development stage, to let them know exactly what data is collected, how it's processed, how it's provided to. So that's also aligns with the new AI regulations EU is bringing us. And we wanted to use the opportunity that people can develop a network and also have a good evening time to relax with food and drinks. We made an audience analysis at the first because we were not sure, shall we do only programming for high level or shall we do it very light and just speak about, talk about AI in general and have some drinks together? So we, we've seen that, yeah, like 75% of the audience were professionals, like PhD students or people who have companies around this area, who wants to use AI in their companies. They really want to see some technical stuff. And we also had general audience who are just curious to hear about this. We didn't want to lose any of them. So I think it's a good idea to start with some audience analysis at the first. So we started always our lectures by addressing all of these audience, not missing any of them. And like every time, 30 minutes, like a tolerable period, we focused on only the technical questions of the professionals, maybe showing some algorithms hands-on, but giving them a way to continue later with a GitHub source code, for instance. And we turned back to general public with quizzes, book giveaways, like things, to not lose them as well. So these two groups somehow merged nicely and they enjoyed sitting together in one lecture. And if one lecture is too technical, if we cannot address it to non-professionals, we introduce it in the beginning when we are announcing it, so they can choose it wisely, they don't blame us if it becomes too technical. We announced it beforehand, what to expect. So this is how we worked. And as a higher purpose, in my heart, always the planet is the focus. So I always try to keep my focus in the lectures and I try to ask also speakers to keep their focus on climate and environmental issues that we are dealing with. I don't want to be an AI teacher who promotes AI just for sake of AI because it's just very cool and nice intelligent tool to use. I'm aware of the footprint of AI and I wish our followers to be aware of the footprint of AI and be conscious about when we are developing something. I believe if people develop AI environmentally friendly, it would be more valuable to our planet. And each time, for instance, when we are introducing a deep learning algorithm, we always mention, maybe it's not always the only solution, maybe you can solve it with earlier simple mathematical algorithms, maybe you don't even need to use AI, like we always give the information so they can choose consciously, just choose the AI when it's really needed and be aware of the footprint of AI. As in other side effects, I think in longer term, we addressed also sustainable development goals a little bit with the activities that we do. That was not the initial purpose of starting, but since we keep the planet in our heart, somehow it went to this direction of supporting sustainable development goals as well. I believe we support, like for instance, number four, quality education for everyone. We provide free lectures, put it on YouTube, put GitHub source code open to everyone, give away books. So we do our best in this area to reduce inequality as well, that might serve. And responsible consumption, for instance. I introduce about being aware of the footprint of AI. And hopefully, we contribute to good jobs and economic, well, I don't want to call it economic growth for Western countries, but maybe finding good jobs. I heard about some audience just want AI jobs by following School of AI. And like climate action and partnerships, we also bring people together to make collaborations, to work together and always keeping the climate in focus when we are making projects. So that's it. And my personal learning from what happened is, when there's a will, there's a way. Things happened. I mean, I just wanted to reach the general audience and I just came up with, "Okay, I'm organizing it in a cafe, at library and things." Then they carried me to a large, nice area to university. And suddenly, people appeared around us to support us, to help us, to bring food, drinks for free. People appear around us when we want to do something. So keep the faith in this area, I believe. You know, the lesson I learned is love is an action, not emotion. That if we love AI, for instance, or Earth Observation, our planet, we need to do something, maybe small, but we need to take the action. I mean, if I just taught about School of AI earlier, it's a nice idea if I gathered up people for teaching AI, but didn't do anything, these things wouldn't happen and we wouldn't be here with this beautiful audience and speakers today. So do something small and you never know where it goes. Do it without expectation. I never knew that it would grow this big and it would be loved. We would have such a lovely community. But we started without expectation, just out of love and things happened. And if you think that, "Okay, how can I make School of AI like something in my area?" Maybe you want to teach either AI or Earth Observation or any other climate-related things. Suddenly, things can look so big, big step-like. But at the first, everything looks difficult before they are easy. Just stop with a small step and you will see that people will appear and you will reach to your goal if you do it out of love, out of goodwill. So thank you so much, this is my talk. And you can follow me on Twitter and this is my website. I will speak again later. Now I leave the floor to the beautiful speakers.
Thank you so much, Beril. Just to echo your words, it's true that if you really want to do something in AI and Earth Observation, certainly you have IZA support for this. So I'm a contact and for all the audience here as well.
Thank you so much, thank you. I'm always lifelong thankful for IZA, for the support and also for the Copernicus services. We wouldn't be doing anything without Copernicus.
That's true. So it's my pleasure to welcome now our second speaker of the day. We have Professor Davistuya with us. So Davis, welcome.
Hello, thank you.
Yes, we can. Are you able to share your screen?
Let's see, I think it should be okay. So, do you see my screen, maybe?
Perfect, yes.
Okay, but full screen, still good?
Still good.
Great, okay. So thank you very much for inviting me to this session and for the kind words, Beril and Anka. And yeah, it's a real pleasure to be here and to, you know, participate in this session of the School of AI of the Netherlands. I'm actually also a product of the Netherlands somehow. I was working in Wacheningen until a couple of years ago. And it's really a pleasure to be back in the Dutch ecosystem and, you know, being able to talk about some exciting things that we have going on here in Switzerland at APFL. So the idea today is to tell you something about our exploration on how we can making deep learning models for Earth Observation more transparent, more interpretable. And I will do that by going through a couple of recent advances we had in the direction of, you know, providing semantic explanation to models, deep models that aim at describing something very, very subjective. That can be, for example, the perception of natural landscapes. But okay, before like diving into the topic of explainable AI, I want to just tell you how we got to that interest and this need to having like explainable models, deep models for remote sensing. And this basically started by this observation that, you know, tradition, our remote sensing tasks are nowadays solved with deep learning in a pretty accurate way. So I mean, if you look around in recent literature, there is a lot of works of very high value that basically are taking some satellite or aerial images, like in the example here, and applying some deep learning models in order to solve a final task. Like here, for example, they are predicting building footprints. And this is something that nowadays we can do with a higher accuracy and there are these building products that are nowadays available to many of us. And the easiness to access this type of technology makes that it kind of really took off, this usage of deep learning models in remote sensing. And we also see it on this exponential growth of publications in science and also like moving these approaches to industry, that it's nowhere to be finished. So I mean, this graph goes till 2018, but of course, it can go, it still keep going up. And while this is like very, very good and promises, I also sometimes have the feeling that I get a little bit lost. So if I Google, you know, "deep learning for remote sensing", I get a visual result like this one, you can see on the slide. And you know, sometimes I have the impression there is so much going on around and then, you know, everybody's trying to, like, solving the same problems with different technologies. And this really for me has brought this desire to go a little bit forward and to really try to think about, okay, I mean, what are these new exciting things that you have going on in remote sensing these days? So it's not fun to do it alone. So I thought, okay, why not do that with some friends? And so I contacted some people that they work with and we started really to have this reflection of, okay, what are these new directions where we think there is still a lot to be done and this is not like solved problems? And could we like distill some of these and just give them out like a kind of a manifesto? We called it an AI agenda here in this paper that is now published in the Science and Remote Sensing Magazine. And basically, in this paper, we ended up distilling six such directions that you see here and all equally extremely exciting for us. But of course, it's not everything, but these are the six that the six authors of these papers thought were particularly interesting. So like how to encode reasoning in deep learning models, how to go massively multi-source by including video and sound data, for example, interacting in natural language, encoding physics, interpretable AI, which will be the topic today, and discovering causal relations. And of course, you know, there is a person behind every one of these approaches. So I give you a little bit of spoiler, so you can see who was basically really in charge of every chapter you can read in that paper. And even though my face is showing up on Direction 3, today I thought of still in the stage to Reba and Roche and then talk a little bit on what we did on interpretable AI. So the rest of the talk will just focus on these interpretable models, exciting future direction. But of course, I mean, you can read about any of those and it's like very, very inspiring potential future research directions. Okay, so let's dive deep into these interpretable AI concepts. And it basically starts with this idea that now we have these AI models that are fairly complex and fairly intransparent. But basically, what people normally want them to achieve is to start from an image, learn some representation that is encoded in, you know, a lot of weights and neurons. And but you want at the end of the day to have the right answer here. So to have a model that will tell you, "Okay, this is a canal. It's a typical Dutch canal that you can see in the image." So we want the model to score high to the class canal. Fair enough. Okay, these models exist and they do a fairly good job. But at the end of the day, it's a little bit like we were just disregarding what was happening in the middle as long as the model was giving the right answer, okay? And we thought, okay, but this is something we should improve because I mean, we would like first to know if the right answer is reached for the right reasons. And also, we would like to see if this is not the case, try to understand why the model is saying canal if it's just detecting some roofs on the buildings. I mean, it could happen because these models have a lot of potential to cheat and find data relationships that do not correspond with what we would expect as humans using our brains that is very good at pattern recognition. So the first thing that people actually came up with were to add an intermediate representation step. They would show us which part of the image will receive a lot of information, so a lot of gradients, if you want, when you propagate the information from the image to the answer. So these are models, there is a lot of them and one is maybe the most famous one is called Gradcom. And you see an example here on the slide, so it will basically give you a And you see an example here on the slide, so it will basically give you a color map. They will tell you in this image what they really used to take maybe decision is this region here. So, okay, I mean, it's looking at the bridge, it's not really looking at the water apparently, so then it's debatable. The model is getting to a certain final decision for the right reasons. And it has been proved in recent literature that this like heat map based interpretable AI approaches. Also cheat quite a lot. And this was a very interesting experiment that was presented at NARIV seventeen. Where some researcher from Google ran a number of these interpretable heat maps methods. On a task of detecting digits that you can see here. So when they classify the number zero, these are the parts that seems to be highlighted by the model. So it seems to be doing a good job because it's highlighting like the circle of the zero and disregarding the background. But then they also started randomizing the labels, so giving one image with a label that is wrong. And or actually mostly, yeah, with a label that is wrong. And in this case, even those methods were kind of starting to pick up. This structure to predict another digit. So to predict the number three, it will start to find out. The color gradients in the image that looked like a number. So you say, in this work, they kind of showed that this. This like gradient based methods were basically doing saliency extraction, but they were not semantics. They were not looking for zero, but they were looking for whatever was seen in the image that would look like a bit. But in the end, what do we want from a method like that? We want a method that given an image. Will try to give us something that we understand as humans, no? So I would like to have a method that will tell me semantic concepts. So in this case, we are looking at a car. So I would like my model to, you know, pick up the door of the car, pick up the wheels, maybe the lights. And I will, by having these parts of the model, I will be able to reconstruct my final answer that is, this is a car. But for doing that, you know, door is here, the wheels are here and so on. The thing I can use for that are the very low level feature representation, which are color gradients in the end. So you know, there is quite a semantic gap between what the model learns at the beginning and the thing we would like to have. But okay, fair enough. I mean, this type of structure happens quite a lot on the door. You see here, you have this type of gradients on the wheel as well, so you have this like horizontal color gradients happening. The vertical ones on the vertical borders and so on. So there is a way to combine this low level and high level feature representation into something that is semantic. Okay, and of course, at the end, we want our network to do all this at the same time. So we want like an end to end learning framework that could connect. Completely model based gradients to semantic concepts that really help us. Okay, and this is the kind of reasoning that led us to our concepts of semantic bottlenecks that they will present you in the rest of the presentation. And not only I will present you a model, but yes, I will also present you how this can be then connected to a problem that is. In my opinion, interesting because it's a subjective matter, okay? So I will talk about the application of trying to express the beauty of a landscape from a digital photo. Okay, then of course, I mean, everybody likes different things. I'm not saying that there is like a universal concept of beauty. But there are some things that are universally prettier than others, okay? So even though at the end of the final description, everybody can have their own opinion. I hope we all agree that between these two images, the one that you like the most is the one on the right. I mean, unless you are into like electricity construction and you really like it. I would say like population wise, the one on the right is prettier than the one on the left, okay? And I mean, we can create a model that would predict this beauty directly in a very intransparent way. But the thing I would like to know is why. And this is where the interpretable AI angle kicks in. Because it permits me to basically understand the reason behind this perception of people of beauty. Okay, how did we basically go there? Well, we used. The actual opinion of people, so we used that cross sourcing experiment that is called Senic or Not. And it's basically a collection of 200,000 images from Great Britain. And it's website, so you can log in yourself and you can start rating pictures. So you will have, you know, this picture here, you can click a number. If you click one, it's that you don't like it. If you click 10, it's that you really, really like it, okay? And so for every image, you get a score or more than a score, it's a collection of scores like this. This landscape here is very pretty, so most people say 10, maybe a couple say nine. And this is not very pretty, so a lot of people said one and you have an average around two. Okay, so we had basically 200,000 photographs of landscapes. And we were able to, with this data, to learn a model that will basically tell us. This is a nice landscape, which is not, I would like to go there. Then you can see the implication on ecosystem services, you can see the tourism industry that could be interested in a problem. All right. But just predicting beauty for me is not enough. I want to understand why. So if I see an image like that, I mean, I can tell you, this is like maybe a. What do you think, Beryl or Anka? I mean, this must be a 5.5, maybe a 6, no? It's not the prettiest landscape ever, but it's good. But you like it because it's very natural, so you have open fields, so this should be like a very positive contribution to beauty. But then you have this road in the middle, yeah, and you have this road signs that really. Why someone did put a road sign there? No, it just destroys the beauty. And so we are good at doing that as humans because we have our, you know, our preconception of what we like from. When we were kids. And I would like the model to be able to learn that. So starting from this hypothesis, we really did that, so we constructed a model that would. Detect objects in images and then co-detect beauty and try to put the two things, to connect the two things into a single framework. So the story is, I will show it here, but I mean, you can have a look on this paper we had on ACCV. Was of like taking these images from Senic or Not, you can see here. So I'm not looking right at you because I have a second screen. And put it into a deep learning model and first try to learn an object detector that localizes. A number of semantic classes in the image space, so having, you know, a detector for trees, a detector for grass, for the roads and so on. And how do we train this thing? Well, of course, we did not have this information from Senic or Not. Because Senic or Not was giving us only if this was a seven or an eight out of 10. But we used like auxiliary data sets that were very good at detecting objects, such as, for example, the sun attribute database. And in the sun attribute database, you basically have a lot of images, nothing probably in England, nothing related to Senic or Not. But they are precisely labeled in terms of the objects that are visible in the images. So we casted this as a multi-label classification problem. So we had all the different objects we wanted to detect, it's like 30 something of those. And we had our CNN predicting every one of them with a zero or a one, okay? So it's not a classification in the sense, I want to pick one class among all the possible ones. But the model is able to pick all those that it can find in the image, okay? And this part is fully trained and it also localizes in space, so it gives you these heat maps that tell you more or less where in the image these objects occur. And why we are training for this task, we have a second task, which is actually taking these same features that are being trained on the sun database. And to connect them with a linear combination. So that they can predict the beauty that we know from Senic or Not. Why linear? Because we want to be able to tell the tree contributes positively three times more than the grass and the road contributes negatively. And if you do a nonlinear combination, then the model is allowed to cheat. So if you keep that part linear, basically you force the model to give you the actual composition of the beauty score. In terms of objects that you can understand. Okay, so the story is that we have a fully trainable model, so this one is a regression scorer, you want to regress the Senic's next score. I mean, we were also regressing the variance, but it was not very, very informative actually. And we were learning the two objects in together, so detect well the object and predict well the beauty. And while you do one, you do the other, so you get better at detecting the beauty if you're better at detecting the objects and the other way around. So we learn actually everything at the same time. And when you have a model like that, since you have your linear layer here, then you're able to actually. Explain why people have found a certain place very pretty or not. And you can, you know, know that this one is very pretty because you have a strong contribution of natural surfaces. Potential for climbing, maybe snow and so on. While for this one, you have a negative score that comes from the fact that there is alphas, asphalt, there is a driving scene and so on and so forth. So you really have a way to interpret your results, which is not just a heat map, but it's something that is meaningful for you and has been learned from data. After doing that for terrestrial images, we thought, okay, let's connect this to Earth observation because, you know, our hearts fit for Earth observation. So we basically used a similar concept, but instead of having this concept based on the sun database. We started to explain by land cover classes from Corin Land Cover. And we knew that the images will be located in a very precise way on a space of Corin that is very coarse. So we were basically predicting at the Corin Land Cover level. And trying to have like an average over several images with respect to the beauty. But then by doing so, we were using the exact same idea to try to understand if the fact that the place is a forest is more appealing than having, you know. A pasture or a certain type of crops. And again, we used the whole of Great Britain, but this time we used Sentinel images, so we went from the top, let's say. And we basically ran a model that was practically identical. And we were able to then have, you know, all Great Britain mapped in terms of which land cover you see and how this is perceived by people. So are pretty landscape more related to agricultural area of this type? And in this region is a positive contribution, in that region is a negative contribution. And this kind of helped us to explain what was the perception of people of this relation between land cover and landscape beauty. And it doesn't stop here, because now we're working in doing this interpretation like open ended. And we are trying to learn representation from text, from example, from the Wikipedia. And try to extract from Wikipedia type of explanations that we didn't have in advance. And encode them into vectors and trying to. Like overlay these new vectors to the explanations we already have and try to find new explanations we didn't know before. For new image that will include new concept that we didn't have previously. So this is still, I mean, it's still work in progress, but it's a very exciting avenue that it's really at the interface between pure image processing. Interpretable AI and also open ended. Text plus image from large dataset like the Wikipedia. Okay, this is 20 minutes. I think I'm out of time. So, well, this is what I wanted to tell you about our research in interpretable AI. And I agree with Beryl, I mean, the sky is the limit, actually, the space is the limit for us. And there is a lot of unsold things for computer vision and remote sensing. And everybody can make a difference and we can make a difference not only for image processing, but actually to make Earth a better place. Thank you very much for the invitation. This is my wonderful team. And yeah, I mean, if you have questions, here I am. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Davis, for joining us.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Just a curiosity, can you tell which was the best looking land cover?
Well, the best I couldn't tell you, but it's very often coastal scenes where you have like very. Very dramatic drops into the sea and things like that. This is like the most people favorite of the data set.
Beach is always, always, you know, images of the beach. All right, very good. So we have.
So we can see each other. There we go.
We have our next speaker from Istanbul Technical University, Professor Elif Sertel.
Hello, can you see my screen?
Yes, we can. Perfect.
Okay, I would like to thank Dr. Beren Simacek for her kind presentation. It's my pleasure to be here and present what we have been doing at Istanbul Technical University. With my master, PhD students and some of the postdoctoral researchers. So my name is Elif Sertel. I'm a professor at Istanbul Technical University, Department of Geomatics Engineering. And today I will be talking about our applications in the remote sensing domain by using different Earth observation data. And I will be talking about some of the pansharpening related tasks that have been conducted. I will continue with the classification examples. And I will give an example of building deduction in terms of object deduction. And finally, I will be talking about land cover segmentation, some Corin data again, like Professor Davis mentioned. I will share our results and some conclusions that we had. And finally, after providing my conclusion, I will be finishing my presentation. So as we already talked about, the geospatial data, especially Earth observation data from satellites. Have been increasing because day by day, new satellites have been launched to the orbit. And each of them has different purposes, so we can say that we have increasing number of Earth observation satellites. And nowadays, thanks to Copernicus program, also from the NASA. Several of the Earth observation data is accessible by all of us. And meanwhile, also from some high resolution and very high resolution data. There are some data sets available again for researchers. So when compared to five or six years ago, nowadays we can reach. Diversity of Earth observation data from different platforms. And the high performance computing is also developing, so this is just to show some satellites onboard. Sentinels are here from European Space Agency. And in addition to these programs, there are also commercial ones like from Airbus. You can see plenty of satellites with high resolution or very high resolution or from Maxar. And if you can check the figure below, you can see the high number of satellites. These are not all Earth observation satellite, of course, but I checked today. And based on the April data, it seems that more than 4,000 satellite, 4,000 and 4,000 satellite is available. In orbit, based on a few months ago's number. The number of satellites are also increasing and we can say that. Huge part of these satellites are also related to Earth observation. So we need to understand how we can benefit from these data sources and deep learning is help a lot. But I also agree with Dr. Simacek comments on this. For some applications still, some traditional methods are also producing good results. So we need to be careful while selecting the application or data while applying the deep learning based approach. So in some cases, it might not be necessary, but we need to understand the problem very well to deal with it. So I would like to talk about first pansharpening and we are also doing similar experiments for super resolution as well. So for most of the satellite, because of the some technical limitations, we cannot have high detail sensors. In general, we might have pancromatic and multispectral together and it's always good to find some methods to. Fuse these two data together in order to increase both spatial and spectral quality of the output images. And for the last few years, we can find a lot of published paper in this topic. So it's also started with CNN based approaches, we also applied them. And then channel spatial attention based reports were also integrated into these pansharpening models. To improve the accuracy and the performance. Gun based reports are also providing good results. And nowadays, channel based attention guns are also providing highly accurate and good performance in pansharpening task. And I would like to share some of the experiments and some of the results we got in this pansharpening task. And here, we generally benefit from very high resolution satellite data. So the data set preparation is important for pansharpening task. But compared to other deep learning tasks, pansharpening data preparation is easier. Because there is no labeling in this stage. If you have good geometric alignment between pancromatic and multispectral image, then it is easier to prepare your data set. But the disadvantage here is generally we don't have high quality reference data. So while doing the matrix calculation, there is always reference data missing. So we use some protocols like WALD in order to create similar data in lower resolution and use some metrics. And those metrics are quantitative, but different metrics can produce different results. So while comparing different methodologies. So while comparing different methodologies, sometimes one metric says one method is good. Sometimes the other metric say the other method is good and you never be certain by only looking at the metrics and decide which method is best for the pan sharpening task. And always visual interpretation is required. And here, what's also important in pan sharpening is including different sensors. Okay, when you create a pan sharpening model with only one sensor, let's say with only Sentinel two, then it might not be useful for other sensors. So we need to be careful while creating this dataset in order to have a generalization and transferability to other sensors' data. Here is an application of us with my PhD student in which we applied channel spatial attention based method. It improved the quality of the results based on our analysis. And here, our training dataset was based on playoff data with 50 centimeter. And in our test data, we cross-checked the results with independent playoff dataset. But in addition to that, we also cross-checked the applicability of our model to other sensors like WorldView 2 and Quickbird in similar spatial resolutions. So as expected, we got good results for playoff test data, but for WorldView and Quickbird, results were not that good. They were okay, but not as good as the playoff. So during the data creation, including different sensors would be useful. And here I can say that introduction of this channel spatial based approach improved the pan sharpening results based on the metrics. As you see here, there are different metrics and in some cases, one metric showed better performance for different method and the other for the other method. So we need to be careful here. It's really hard to find a method which provides high quality results for all kinds of metrics here as we use for different applications. And these are some of the results and comparison of both traditional methods and the method that we propose with the channel spatial based attention. And when we compare the results, in most of the land cover categories, the proposed method provides better performance and better quality. And what is important here is while checking the results, we need to check different land categories as well. So it is like in the previous presentation, which category seems nice or bad to you? Similar to that, we need to define different land categories in our test data to be sure that the model that you developed will be producing good results for different land categories as well. And while selecting this, both spectral and spatial information is important. So we need to select test images, including different objects of different sizes as well as different spectral characteristics or different colors. And here we are trying to create a test datasets like that. But mainly, there is a paper now from other researchers in which they prepared a test dataset from different sensors, which can be used as a benchmark and I think it will be really useful. And this is another example of our pan sharpening results from a gun method. And it was published in Arturable. You can also check the codes if you are interested in. Here as well, we tried for different high resolution and very high resolution satellites in order to produce good results for pan sharpening task. And the gun-based approach provides good accuracy and performance based on our analysis. So it is the paper that I already mentioned. You can train your model with different datasets, but it's also important to have a common test data, including different sensors and different land categories. And this paper, published recently, provides these different sensors like SPOT, PLAYUP, DIGITALGLOB, very high resolution and high resolution data. They also tried to pick up different cities covering different land categories. Therefore, I think this might be useful for researchers who are conducting pan sharpening and conducting tests by using these dataset. So that is an important point. And now for our pan sharpening approaches, we will be benefiting from that as well. I would like to continue with the land use and cover classification, the methodologies that we are applying here. And in this one, we use the widely used public dataset of NWPUN8. These are from aerial and satellite platform. And the number of classes are changing. For one of them, there are 30 classes, for the other 45 classes. And there are several papers published with these datasets by applying different architectures. So in this one, we tried to see if applying ensemble based approach can produce better results or not. This is one of my master student's thesis. And then we implemented different methods. And finally, we applied snapshot assemblies, stochastic weight averaging and fast geometric assemble methods in order to see if we can have better accuracy or not. And then based on our experiments, after finding the base architecture for the baseline, we implemented these different assemble methods. And we can say that for all of the different assemble methods, we got better performance. But among these three different assemble methods, stochastic weight averaging, SWA, produced better results. We also investigated the results in terms of class based accuracy. This is an example of the classification. On the first round, we have good classification results. But you see for the D and E, in which the model has some problem. Generally, the mixture of church with palace or palace with church, but they are very similar objects, as you can see in the images. These were the cases in which our ensemble approach failed, but in general, we got good results. So this is a summary table. On the left, we have user and producer accuracy for each class. On the right, we have position and recall values for each class. Here, you don't need to analyze all values, but in summary, when we have pink or blue color in these tables, that mean that the ensemble method is doing better job than the baseline. And in most cases, it seems that applying ensemble method produce better results. Even for some classes, we have the increase of 3% or 5% accuracy or recall values. So we can suggest the implementation of ensemble approach for land use and land cover classification based on our analysis. This is another study for the object detection that we conducted with my postdoctoral researcher. Here, we were dealing with building detection. And at the beginning, we analyzed the openly available datasets. Because there are plenty of openly available datasets, but we need to be careful while dealing with them because we might have noisy labels, as you see here. So for some of them, in reality, we don't have any building, but in the reference data, it seems that there are some buildings, as you can see here or here. In some cases, there might be unmatching of the boundaries in reference data. And in some cases, like here, there might be resolution problem in the original image. So while using open source data, we need to cross-check the quality. That is what we did at the first stage of our building detection project. And then we create a new building dataset for Istanbul. I don't know if you know Istanbul or not, but Istanbul is a metropolitan city and it's hugely urbanized. We have building everywhere and I can say that we have regular or irregular buildings. Some of them are very close to each other, as you can see here. But some of them have good spaces in between. So we have different structures, different building structures in terms of pattern, in terms of roof type. Therefore, Istanbul is a good laboratory to create a building dataset. And in this project, we created our own datasets from these images. We used 150 playoff images of 1,500 by 1,500 pixels. It's covering approximately 85 square kilometer area. And we labeled 40,000 buildings. Actually, here, our undergraduate students help us to create labels. And we had two level of students here. One group were creating the labels and the other group, which were more senior than them, were cross-checking the boundaries of the labels, if they are okay or not. And then we prepared this dataset. Actually, we had a publication under review based on these work that I showed here in my presentation. And these are some results that we have. Actually, at the beginning, we conducted 60 different experiments in order to find out the best parameters, best architectures. And based on our analysis, we got good results with UNIT++ and the SRS-101 encoder. And IOU that we got is 93.8% here. And you can see some results on the right-hand side. But we had also some problems, like here on the left. This is a historical area and you see, this is a specific place, touristic place in Istanbul, it's Grand Bazaar, maybe you heard about it. As you see from the roof, all of the buildings are kind of close to each other. So a normal building deduction, architecture that we created could not identify this structure very easily. And even we can say we have better results, as you can see from here. Or on the right, you can check, it's another building, it's a mosque. But the building structure is again different than normal buildings. Therefore, model did not provide good results here as well. So although we had different labels for different building structures, yes, for this kind of cultural heritage buildings, either you should include a dataset about this to improve the model or you need to do some post-processing to fix that problem. At the last of the project, we also cross-checked if our trained model with our new dataset can produce good results for other publicly available datasets. Again, we would like to see the transferability and generalization of the approach that we provided. So these metrics showing it. As you see, Istanbul data as training and Istanbul data as testing, you can see the result here. And there are two known public datasets for building detection. One is INRIA and it's from aerial, 30 centimeter resolution, 8 bit data. And the other is Massage Test, again, it's aerial, but the spatial resolution is one meter. I can say that Massage Test dataset is more similar to our Istanbul datasets in terms of spatial resolution. And when we check it, for the data that we created with Istanbul, the weights that we created from our datasets can produce good results for Massage Test, as you see here, around 0.84. But for INRIA, the results were not that good. We did the same approach. We trained the INRIA datasets, create some weights with the base model that we created with UNIT++ and the encoder that we selected. And afterwards, we tried if our Istanbul test datasets could produce good results or not. So we tried to cross-check our data and with other data. And in Massage Test case, it seems that when we trained the model with Istanbul data that we created and when we use the output weights from it, still we can have good results for Massage Test. But for INRIA, we cannot say this approach. But apart from that, if you train the INRIA and have some weights, that is not also producing good result with test Istanbul dataset. So you need to be careful with the sensors and different datasets. When you check one data, the result seems very good, optimistic. But when you have diversity of data together, things are becoming complicated. So you need to understand the model, you need to understand the data that you feed your datasets. These are for building examples that we have. Also, at the last step, we applied some post-processing method. This is for the vector data in order to improve the border quality of the models. So you can either find some features inside the deep learning or you can include extra data in order to have better borders. But as another approach, you can also do some post-processes. All vector data, as you see here, which is easier and faster in order to have better boundaries for the buildings, as we did here. And we can also suggest this approach as the last step of an object detection problem. And finally, here, I would like to talk about land use and cover mapping. Here, I mean the segmentation, having the vector boundaries of each classes. And in this study, we also deal with Corin level classes, third Corin level classes, actually, the diversity of them. They are kind of complicated. If you are working with the first level of Corin, five classes are general and they are not hard to identify. But when you move to the third level, the classes are becoming more complex. And in this study, my master student tried to find out these land use and cover classes. Okay, and I guess I have a question, but I can answer it later after the presentation in the chat. I saw a question. Okay. So in this study, we created a new dataset for Istanbul again. But we would like to see the contribution of different datasets. We want to check the multi-model remote sensing data. So for our research area, this is the former Istanbul Airport and surrounding. We have plenty of different land use and cover classes here. We have airport, sea, urban areas with different densities. So those are also important. We have industrial areas and highways, port area. So this region was kind of complicated in terms of different land use and cover classes. And for optical data, we use SPOT 7, which has 1.5 meter sample resolution, but we can assume 2 meter resolution for it. And it has four different spectral bands in multispectral mode. Also, we obtained Terasar from DLR. We thank DLR for supporting us with this free data for our academic research. And this is high resolution spotlight beam mode image. And we tried to see what will be the resulting land use and cover boundaries by using only optical, by using only SAR or integrating both of them together to the system. These are the classes, as you see. Land cover classes are a little complicated compared to general level one. So here, what is important is to prepare the reference, the label data. And we use object based classification to create these datasets. So one of my suggestions for creating a good land cover, land use segmentation dataset might be to use an object based approach as well for the selected test regions. You can use object based approach to create good reference data. And this is the distribution of training validation and test set. Generally, the problem that you might see, as we see in our case, might be the imbalance between the classes because it's not easy to have the similar distribution of each class. But there are some methodologies in order to handle this problem as well. And here are some sample patches that we have. So on the left, we have optical. In the middle, we have SAR. And this is the reference data that we created from object based classification. Here in our mind, we were also thinking about some European project like Urban Atlas. And we were thinking if we can create a kind of automatic methodology to support those metrics as well because Urban Atlas classes are also similar to Corin third level, but including more urban classes. But we started with these classes and we think that we can go deeper later and increase the number of land cover classes at the next stages. And these are different patches, as I showed you. And then we tried to find out the best backbone architecture and best segmentation architecture. After conducting several different experiments, we concluded with Deep Lab version 3 and RSNX 50 as a good architecture selection for our study area. So at the beginning of our experiments, we compared three band and four band data. So with SPOT, we have red, green, blue and near infrared. And for most of the ready models, they are only three bands, but we would like to see the contribution of near infrared as well to RGB. As you see, we have better performance in F1, precision recall and IOU values. I don't have the details here, but we also conducted class based accuracy, user accuracy and producer accuracy. And in most cases, as we expect, four band produce better results. And in my figures below, first I have the optical data, then reference data. And this is the result of three band classification. The second part is result of the four band. The second part is result of the four band classification. And then we apply SAR data and again, uh, we compare the optical and SAR. Here optical is the four band optical and the SAR. The results of SAR were good, we can say, but not as good as the optical as you see here. And then we tried to fuse these both data together. We want to apply the multi model approach and then see the contribution of both data set together. And we implemented these architectures in PyTorch. There were different fusion sections, early, middle or late fusion. And we applied all of them compared with, based on our analysis, it seems that early fusion produced better results than the other two. And the details of these technical sites can be found in the master thesis of my student, which is in English and which is publicly available. We can also share it with you if we are interested more about the details. But in conclusion, we would like to say that the multi model learning improved the classification accuracy specifically for some classes. As you see, IOU value also increased two percent here. And you need to keep in your mind that the classes that we are dealing with are really hard to identify, the number of classes. And their complexity make the problem challenging. So in summary, I mentioned about four different applications. For pen sharpening, we are also applying similar pen sharpening methods for the super resolution problem. I can say that first problem is lack of real reference data, generally we are generating it. And that is a problem, but this is a general problem. As an alternative, it's really hard to find satellite images of different resolution obtained simultaneously over the same region. But maybe UAV images obtained in different altitudes can be used as a reference data. Because you will, you will have different JST values and it will be easier to use the highest resolution one as a reference image. We are planning to do something like that and create a reference data from UAV specifically for the metric calculations. But here we need to be careful with the metrics, as I told you, you can have contradictory results among different spectral and spatial metrics. So you need to be careful and in any cases, visual control is necessary. And inclusion of different sensors are important. Either you need to create sensor specific weights or you need to include variety of sensors into your model. If you want to have a universal result which can work with different sensors. Otherwise, it's only for one sensor. Even you need to be careful to represent different land use and cover classes, objects of different sizes. Because if you don't have them in your trains, the set or test set to check it, your model cannot provide good results. So you need to be careful while creating your training set, as I can say. But thanks to this I E triple paper, those researchers provide good data set, test data set from different sensors, which can be used for benchmark analysis. But in any case, on the train site, you need to be careful with these things. And I would like to talk a little bit about labeling problems. Labeling is a kind of heavy work. We are always looking for labeled data, open source data sources are available, like OpenStreetMap. We can use them or Professor Tia mentioned about Wikipedia. But there is also Wikimap, you can check and take some land cover land to data from these sources. In any case, you need to be careful with them because they are including noise data. Sometimes the label itself might be problematic, sometimes the boundary of the object might be problematic. So we can benefit from these open source data after cross checking them. And for the land use land classification task, when you increase the number and variety of the classes, the problem becoming challenging. But here, Ensemble provide better results based on our analysis. The experiment we did was only for one label data. For each patch, we have one label, but nowadays multi label data sets are also becoming publicly available. Some from Sentinel and there is also a new data set from Technical University of Mini produced from aerial images, including multi label data sets. They need further investigation. And for the object deduction, here we deal with building deduction, we apply post processing. I had a question about post processing. We applied it to vector data in JS environment. Since we are coming from geometric background, we are also using different geospatial tools while preparing data or post processing it. So the output of the deep learning model was converted into vector data. And then we did different analysis in the JS environment in order to have better boundaries. Here also, I did not show any experiment, but we did some experiments with multitask learning. You can include different tests inside deep learning. And this is also sometimes causing better results if you can define the test appropriately, I can say. For the building deduction test, we did it. And then for the segmentation as a last point and creating densely annotated lay reference data is hard and it's time consuming. We can benefit from semi supervised, unsupervised, zero shot learning, fifth shot learning approaches or the object based approach as we did or open source data after cross checking them. But we need to be careful with the class imbalance problem, as I mentioned. There are some ways to avoid from it, but you need to be careful during the data preparation as well. And nowadays, we can benefit from multi source data, from multi sensor and multi source. We can use optic radar data, but also use multi source data as in the previous presentation mentioned. Cross source data, you can include them into your models. Or we can also use gun based approach to create some synthetic data of optical and SAR in order to increase the number of the data used for training. And here I can say that multi model data inclusion improved our land use land cover segmentation results even with high complexity classes that we use. And I would like to thank you for your attention. I can answer the questions now. And this is my Twitter address and LinkedIn address. You can also email me later if you have any questions. So Anka, I guess I have some questions, I cannot track them during the presentation.
Thank you so much, Elif, by the way. Great presentation, thank you for joining us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, yes, there was a question, you touched a bit on it.
Post processing ideas.
On the post processing and maybe you can share the link to that paper.
Okay, that paper is under review, but I get, we expect to have a result soon. I can, I can share the details. So if he or she who asked this question, I don't know, can send me an email, I can share more details. But as I told you, we converted data into vector format and then conduct our post processing in JS environment. And there are different functions for smoothing. I can provide more information if you can write an email to me, I can share the details.
Great, Ellen, I hope you, you caught the email from Professor.
I can write it here again.
Perfect, that's great, thanks so much. Uh, I think we're.
Chris joined us, by the way, thanks a lot, Chris, for joining.
For having me.
Hi, Chris. Um, in the program, we had, we had a ten minute break scheduled now. So maybe we can take that to grab a coffee and stretch our legs and come back at, yeah, three thirty here in Rome at least. We're slowly coming back. Just recalling our next speaker. So having a look at the agenda, we'll hear next from Dr. Chris Matman from NASA JPL on AI for unlocking space exploration applications. Welcome, Chris.
Thanks, Anka, thanks for having me. Can you, can you all hear me all right?
Yes, perfectly, and we can see you as well.
Great, great. Thank you, let me, let me see if I can share my slides here. Get started. All right, just double checking, you can see my slides, they're full screen, they look okay.
They look perfect, yep.
Awesome, all right, well, let's get started. So I'm Chris Matman, I'm the Chief Technology and Innovation Officer at NASA JPL, the Jet Propulsion Laboratory in Pasadena, California. So I hope everyone's doing all right here at this excellent meeting. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I run the artificial intelligence analytics and innovative development organization at JPL. And basically, that organization has a number of goals. First and foremost, we are trying to envision the future of information technology for all of NASA, not just JPL, but all of NASA, including our department and directorate as well. To do that, we kind of have to keep an eye on the technology waves and kind of detect which ones are important to innovation, to science, to engineering and things like that. And when we do, we don't go it alone, we engage really like industry partners, academia, other collaborators and so forth to kind of test, try, adapt, deploy and evaluate those technology trends. And doing this basically allows us to get those trends infused into JPL, but also to infuse the next generation of JPL and talent for doing that. So, you know, I'm from Southern California, we think about surfing. So how, how do we think about technology waves and what do those mean to us? We like to think about them from the context of sort of far out, you know, things that maybe haven't become like a swell that hasn't become a wave yet, you know, to surf. Those for us are going to be things like quantum computing or, you know, neuromorphic computing or, you know, block chain on a chip, you know, for security and things like that. These are things that are really cool. We'd love to test them out, but they haven't sort of become something that we could surf yet. Maybe more kind of apropos, you know, for us is AI, you know, in space. You know, this is testable, you know, we had something like the Ingenuity helicopter, which is our helicopter that went on perseverance, went along with it to Mars. On it, it has a next generation Qualcomm Snapdragon chip. Okay, so this is, we have the ability to test out new types of AI chips and things like that. So this is a wave that we can test it out, try it out. It was part of a technology demonstration. If it, if we fell off our surfboard, it wouldn't have been the end of the world. But now we didn't and, you know, we successfully surfed it. Now it's part of the core mission for Mars twenty twenty and things like that. And then finally, there are some things that are just, you know, waves that are very easy to spot. These are things that, you know, we can easily surf and test and try out. And so this is sort of the way that we think about this. So what are the emerging sort of technology waves that we're thinking about? We kind of group them into different categories, cybersecurity, new types of computing, software defined everything, ubiquitous computing, applied AI, new habits. It's all connected by artificial intelligence and automation and so on and so forth. In the realm of cybersecurity, we're looking at things like blockchain encryption by default, secure enclave technology. In accelerated computing, we're thinking about new ways of computing like serverless, obviously on cloud, but maybe more the far out there things like quantum neuromorphic. And you'll hear about some of those today. Software to find everything down to the networks, you know, being able to be self healing, adaptable, zero trust, things like that. All of this is happening on an increased number, you know, the per capita. They said at CES, the Consumer Electronics Show, that was held virtually in the last year, that the per capita amount of devices for, for each person is going to move from dozens to hundreds in the next five years. So each person will have hundreds of IoT devices and you're seeing this. You know, I'm not wearing them right now, but just for illustration, you know, these are, I'll switch. These are my Facebook Ray Ban stories, you know, which are actually IoT glasses that I could be recording you, you know, on right now and stuff like that. That's, you know, I have an eyewatch, you know, right here. Besides that, these are poly headphones, all of these are connected by Bluetooth and or, you know, emerging protocols and so forth. And that's just three devices, you know, and I myself probably have hundreds of devices nowadays. So the world is moving to IoT, we have to figure it out and leverage it. All of these things at the edge, we're thinking about how AI is integrated into it. At CES this year, interestingly enough, they also showed basically edge device routers that would convert five G to Wi-Fi six and built inside the Qualcomm version of this is a Snapdragon AI processor, you know, so that we can do AI and apply AI at the edge and things like that. So AI is everywhere. And then before the pandemic, another thing we're sort of thinking about too are really the new habits of individuals. Before the pandemic, you know, we looked a lot at the new generation, the next generation. We were thinking about the way that they operated, you know, reduced footprint, you know, cord cutting, no cords, being able to move and, you know, inhabit sort of anywhere and work. Well, guess what, the pandemic made it so that that's sort of the norm now and, and so things like that. So we're, we're looking at all of those technology trends and these are all the tech waves. And so, and that's how we're thinking about, you know, how we try and test them like I talked to you about. So, you know, we like to think of the world with sort of data, you know, everybody is moving their data into the cloud. You know, open source isn't a weird terminology anymore. It's sort of the kind of standard bearer now, you know, you have your data in the cloud. You have application programming interfaces to get at this data, they're likely open source. You have data visualization and analytics that allows you to report on and think about this data. And then, you know, the way that we're interacting with this data is evolving as I talked about. In the past, we type, we click, we touch. Today even, we hear, we speak, we gesture at it. Maybe tomorrow we'll sense, think and smell, you know, related to that. And obviously, you know, this has other applications and many other verticals as we think about, you know, climate, temperature, you know, measuring things like water and electricity. I remember also at CES this year, they had a cooler sort of water faucet where you told it, basically pour me a cup of water, pour me a gallon of water, right? You know, so that's an example of really, you know, intelligent digital assistance, AI, machine learning, integrating across all of these things, you know, the data and all of these things. So this is sort of, you know, the color coding, this is semi important because this is actually the way that we organize our team. You know, in my department and division, we have an IoT team, you know, we have a cloud team, visualization analytics and ML team. You know, we have interns, management. So we're actually organizing ourselves to go along with these tech waves. So we're not just exploring them, thinking about them, tracking them, but we're actually organizing and recruiting along them as well. So now that I've told you about the tech waves, the ways that we think about them, how we, you know, evaluate them and why they're important. Let me tell you about some projects that illustrate some of these emerging tech waves. I can't talk about all of them. I'll talk about a subset of them that really relate to the JPL mission lifecycle and the phase lifecycle for sort of all of our projects. I'll just give you a intro to each of them and then save some time at the end if there are any questions. So the first projects I'll talk about are in the areas of mission formulation and planning. And then we'll get to mission operations. So JPL has what we call an end to end approach for basically phased mission life cycles. What that means is that we start from a back of the napkin sketch for an idea for a futuristic mission or project. That sketch is sort of evaluated amongst many teams of individuals and subject matter experts. We run what we call studies through our innovation foundry in which we sort of evaluate whether those ideas had legs, those concepts had legs. And then we come up with candidate designs from that evaluation. Those candidate designs could then lead to costing several different cost models across many subsystems to see, hey, what, for these designs, you know, which ones are more costly, which aren't the ones, the best ideas out of that basically mature to full proposals. And that's how you get things like missions on Mars and instruments that are measuring, you know, information about other planets. You know, because if we win those proposals, you know, these are likely hundreds of millions of dollars US or even billions in the case of things like Mars rovers and ten year decadal projects to implement them. And so those ideas, you know, go through that sort of full vetting in this sort of innovation foundry. So the foundry has a part of it called the A team. That's the concept shop that basically takes those napkin sketches and matures and evaluates those ideas. And as you can imagine, this is a lot of early stage technology research to test out maybe some of those tech waves, maybe produce these candidate designs. It also involves a lot of before we started working with them, manual searches, manual internet searches, manual research gathering to prepare for these studies. And after we started working with them and applying things like natural language processing, what we did is we looked at the way they worked and we started to create ways to mash up external research data with internal JPL data related to that. Who's publishing in topics related to ozone? Which people should we invite to these studies? How are they connected? Who's publishing in topics related to ozone? Which people should we invite to these studies? How are they connected? This is all using artificial intelligence, natural language processing, data analytics, it's pulling external data in mashing it up with internal JPL data. And it's basically aiding early mission concept research and formulation. It's a one-stop shop of accessing this information. It means they don't have to go and do a bunch of Google searches anymore. It's all there for them. The people that are part of these, the scientists, and allows them to kind of understand how JPL internally sort of matches up with the outside world and external research. So we don't just do that for deciding who to bring to these studies and, and so on and so forth, but we also do it from the, from the point of submitting a proposal. Once we've achieved a candidate design, candidate costing model and one that's successful, we submit a proposal to our sponsors, to NASA, and then we get back relevant feedback. And so we take this feedback, which they call proposal debriefs, which tells us the major weaknesses, the minor weaknesses, these types of things, and we run it through the same NLP pipeline. And we basically look to uncover patterns in those debriefs and figure out, hey, you know, why did we win this proposal? Why did we lose it? And we do business intelligence and analytics on that whole end-to-end process. This makes it so that we don't write the same proposal again. This makes it so that the next time we address our strengths and weaknesses and so forth, and that we're introducing new research capabilities along those tech waves in sort of a principled way. This is using AI, NLP, latent di-trick analysis, which is a topic analysis approach and so on, to look at the relevant strengths and weaknesses across the different areas of the proposal. So it's not just in the phase A or pre-phase A, which we call it formulation phase, that we're applying these new tech waves. Once we've won a proposal, we enter what's called phase B. And as my, some of my favorite colleagues at JPL like to call this, this is where we draw pretty pictures of what we've decided and stated we're going to build. This is where we draw the engineering diagrams and we produce in phase B, all of the sort of understanding across the engineering tools of what we're going to do. And these drawings undergo a lifecycle. We release them, we allow them for edit, we, you know, evaluate them and run them through tests, we then share them with others. So there's a whole sort of footprint that happens to this. And so we've developed a system called the Business Event Transaction Registry, or better, to look at that engineering footprint in a common way. And so basically, the issue is many, many dozens of tools. And in fact, we use the Siemens Team Center, you know, set of tools to engage in this phase B lifecycle. There are dozens of tools. And, you know, when you create this sort of footprint across them, before Better, there wasn't a way to kind of look at it in a common way because people would be creating different parts of this lifecycle and different tools. And so Better is a system that looks like this. These are many missions in a Gantt chart type of sort of alignment. Each one of these lines represents a different engineering events. There are many hundreds of thousands of these events across many, many hundreds of missions. And so each of the length of the event is the amount of time you're looking at Mars 2020 right now. Let's look at Mars Insight, that was the 2018 mission. What you see on the left, you know, there is sort of the duration and the length and the amount of events per each mission, but this Gantt chart gives you a really interesting view. And we arrived at it after doing visual design, a user experience design process, working with the people who are doing the engineering process at JPL. And basically building this big data visualization in an analytic way. No one told us to build a Gantt chart. We just looked at the data and said, hey, this would be a nice way of looking at it because lots of things jump out at you when you make this Gantt chart across the different phases. For instance, you can look and see, oh, in April 2016 for Insight, which is the one that's measuring Mars quakes right now, there seems to be a big gap. What happened there? Well, actually, there was a big issue with the boon in the Mars quake measure, and they actually had problems in doing engineering for that. And that's why the gap just jumps right out at you there. Right? And so we're building these types of visual analytics, big data visualizations so that we can understand our phased engineering lifecycle and the formulation, post-formulation phase when we're actually doing the engineering design. So pivoting real quick to mission operations and thinking about that, so JPL on behalf of NASA operates what we call the Deep Space Network, really on behalf of the world. The Deep Space Network are three dishes in Canberra, Australia, Madrid, Spain, and then Goldstone, California, that are about the size of a football field. 70-meter dishes and each one, and they provide continuous coverage or follow the sun of assets both in near Earth and in deep space using radio frequency waves. And so because the DSN isn't just for NASA, you know, ESA are partners, they're Israel, many partners, basically the world has to use the DSN to do this. You can imagine that the DSN is very busy. And in fact, it is because many missions know many years ahead of time when they will have critical events. So maybe to illustrate this, we know when, based on orbital paths, mission planning and whatever, whenever we launch a Mars mission, we do it in a window in which the time to get to Mars from Earth is minimized, you know, that it's nine months rather than many years based on, you know, the configuration of our planets in the galaxy. So we know many years in advance too, when the critical operations for that Mars mission might be, when it's, say, landing on Mars and when we'll need lots of time and tracks on these different DSN dishes and, you know, be able to sort of track things for a mission during these critical events. Now, one Mars mission isn't the only one. The reality is there are many, 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 many missions that use the DSN, like I said, and most of the time the DSN graphs sort of look like this. So the columns in this graph are different weeks in December 2017. The rows are different DSN dishes. And as you can tell in any one cell of a week in a row, you know, they are massively oversubscribed because each one of those boxes there represents a different mission. And so this is sort of the norm. 85% of this problem is solved by basically operations, research, logistics, AI planning that's existed for 20-plus years. And Steve Shen at JPL, is a JPL fellow, runs a group and has been an AI leader that has, you know, basically developed tools to do this. The last 15, sometimes 20%, though, basically amounts to mission managers getting into a smoke-filled room and horse trading to basically, you know, satisfy the last mile of these constraints. And so one of the questions we asked ourselves is, could we apply new types of AI, things like deep reinforcement learning, things like looking at what Google was doing with AlphaGo, playing a game and building an agent to play a game against itself? Could we do a same thing to basically learn how those mission managers, like if we gave this AI agent all of the requested time for different missions across hundreds of missions across a decade on the DSN, and then what it actually got in terms of its request? Could the agent learn the same constraints and across all of these different missions for what those mission managers were doing? And so the short answer is, after a three-year research project, the answer is yes. We have some very promising results in which we use deep reinforcement learning in an agent. This is an agent playing several versions of a decadal, basically placement game of trying to request time on these DSN dishes and then coming up with optimal candidate schedules that satisfy the mission constraints for that. This is a three-year research project. We're in the process of publishing this right now, but basically suffice to say is we're very encouraged by the results. So that's for mission operations. Now let's think a little bit about science. You know, we're in the Phase CD lifecycle here, Phase CDE, where we're operating the mission. It's been developed and we're getting science back. So thinking in the future of those Mars missions and things like that. So today, I tell people, those amazing rovers on, on Mars, unfortunately, inside of them have pea-sized brains. And the challenge with that is that, well, cosmic radiation is a nemesis for us. When we put hardware up into space, it's irradiated and that messes with the hardware. You know, if you think about computer, you know, lingua franca, it turns zeros to ones and, you know, ones to zeros unless it's been, you know, radiation tested and we're confident that this hardware can withstand the cosmic radiation in space. And so that makes it so that we have to put iPhone 1 processors, which I tell people the equivalent of in these amazing rovers. But tomorrow, we won't have to do that. We'll have things like high-performance spaceflight computing, we'll have things like Qualcomm Snapdragons, other things that we are confident and won't just be a technology demonstration, we'll have these types of AI processors so that we'll be able to do really amazing things on the rover itself. And so the challenge with us is that Deep Space Network is a very thin pipe, as I mentioned. And because it's a thin pipe, we basically, to do Mars surface operations today, we send back about 200 images a day to figure out what to do the next day on most Mars missions, including 2020 and Mars Science Laboratory Curiosity. That's because it's a 14-plus to 20-minute-plus round trip light time. You send something there, you wait to get a message back. So because of that thin pipe and because of our lack of processing, what if in the future we had AI processors? And if we did on the rovers, what if instead of getting back 200 images a day, I could send back a million text captions? Because text is much cheaper to send over the wire than images. And so the reality is we've been, after a three-year research project as well, testing that out. We took the Google Show and Tell Neural Image Cache Generator algorithm and we adapted it and did learning with less labels, generative learning and other approaches to basically look at, grab Mars NAV CAM data from MSL Curiosity, you know, over many years. And to take images like this and then produce text captions like you see below. These are scientifically validated. They capture things like cardinality, how many rocks, it's seeing how far away they are. You know, different really interesting geological properties. So they have to be things that you believe in and they are validated. But if we could send these back, the text captions instead of the images, we could get much, much more coverage and much better understanding of what's going on. And that would allow us in the future to build ground interfaces like you see here. This is the Arroyo outside of JPL during the pandemic. We've been testing the Athena rover, which is one of our test rovers. It has two Nvidia TX2s on it to simulate future HPSC processing. It's connected in that area by Verizon MiFi. Basically, communication is happening when it builds and generates these image captions by running our algorithm, which we call Scotty, which is our neural image caption generator. What you see in the bottom right is it's got a camera on that as well. That camera, we can run a different algorithm for soil property object classification that we call Spock. Yes, there's a Star Trek theme, this interface is called the Uhura. And then, and so basically, these are showing you what, you know, a future smart rover with HPSC on it and our algorithms for image captioning, as well as you're about to see for terrain classification, could do. You know, this is what the future could look like, you know, from our surface operations. Looking at these captions in real time, looking at the video in real time, depending on if we get things like Deep Space Optical Calm and others. And this is the future of ground stations, you know, for our projects. So one of the last things I'm going to talk about here is we're sort of at the end of the phased engineering lifecycle and we're now getting data back, but it's not science, it's engineering data. And so as it turns out, many, many hundreds of missions, each mission may have dozens of instruments on it. And those instruments tell us a lot about their health. We call that engineering telemetry. And right now, people look at those telemetry channels to find out when there's anomalies and looking at it manually is very difficult and time-consuming. And it's also prone to error. Typically, to find anomalies in time series like this in mission operations, we draw a horizontal line either above or below the x-axis and say if it goes above or below this line, it's an anomaly or an error. This thresholding baseline approach kind of sucks, but it's been the approach people have used for years. And so better ways of doing it are maybe applying things like time series modeling, long, short-term memory models, or recurrent neural networks, deep neural networks, to basically learn what true normal is in the actual waveforms for telemetry instead of just drawing horizontal lines and then actually figuring out what a true anomaly is and what isn't. That's precisely what we've been doing with Telemom. We published it at KDD in 2017. It's an approach for looking at engineering data from spacecraft and figuring out anomalies based on recurrent neural networks and long, short-term memory networks. Telemom isn't just an algorithm, it's a user interface that we built and deployed. This is for Mars Science Laboratory. What you're seeing here is a capability for an engineer and analyst to come, pick different channels, engineering telemetry channels, which you see in the upper left, and dynamically create an LSTM model that will detect anomalies and then to define different processing steps to do on those inputs. Once you're happy with the model, you can go and save it. It'll create the model and you can take that model and apply it on the fly to the different telemetry channels. So you see the user doing that and then applying it on the fly here, you can actually then evaluate how well the model is performing you know, in a simulated test bed for MSL for that. So this is Telemom, this is deep neural networks, this is applied AI, and it's looking at the engineering anomaly analysis phase of the lifecycle for that. So I've talked about a number of projects across JPL, across the phase lifecycle, how we're applying and using those tech waves, how we're recruiting it, how we're thinking about those tech waves. And I just want to thank you all for your time. And I'd be happy to take any questions that you have. And let me go ahead and stop sharing so you can see me. And I think that I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chris. This was, was really informative and it's a really good transition to the Smart Cities talk that Beryl is preparing just now. Yeah, very, very good to have you here.
Thank you so much, Chris, for your presentation.
Anytime, anytime. So let's see, I don't know if, yeah, I don't, I don't see any questions in the chat. So yeah, if there are no questions, I'll, I'll, you know, feel free to email me. I'm easily accessible or, you know, can ask, you know, you can ask Beryl or Anka, you know, to get in touch with me. But happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chris. And yeah, just a reminder to, to everyone that is attending that we have a chat here. So if you want to ask some questions, just, just put them in there. Okay, thanks a lot. So I think we'll pass to, to Beryl now. So I pass you the ball.
Yes. I've got relatively shorter presentation and I will be happy to reserve time for questions answered. So I hope you see my screen again. As I mentioned in my previous talk, I'm working at University Saxion and our topic is looking at cities and climate adaptation of cities. We are also highly interested in climate models because it's highly related to learn about the prediction of how the air quality, freshwater levels, heat islands, urban heat islands are going to change in the, in, in the future. So here I will present a short talk about what we are looking at regarding to climate adaptation of cities. This is my short outline. I will mention quickly about what climate models are at the moment and how remote sensing is helping and what kind of adaptation indicators maybe we can extract from satellite images. And then I will come to AI part, how AI could help to make maybe some innovative models for climate prediction. And how explainable AI, interpretable AI methods also can help to understand what things are really contributing to climate change within the cities. And I will end up with a small discussion at the end. Maybe you're aware of the heat island impact. At the moment, 75% of European population and 68% of the world population is living in urban areas. And these urban areas are responsible with creating heat island impacts which accelerate climate change. Because these heat islands do not only heat up the city itself, but they also radiate heat to outside. So even if you move outside of the city, those oceans, forests, open areas are also impacted by this radiated heat from these heat islands. Therefore, we really need to identify what's causing this. And we really need to do some changes within the cities if we want to improve the climate predictions for our future. Otherwise, not only cities and these amount of people will be affected, but all planets will be affected from this huge impact from the cities. So if you are not familiar with climate models, there are so many of them, but they are working in a similar way. They need to cut the world into grids, as you see, in three-dimensional cubes. Because Earth system, Earth is so big and the system is so complex. And when they look at, for instance, ocean parameters, air parameters, they look at one cube at a time and they make the climate prediction at one cube at a time. But then what we are worrying about is, or what I'm mostly worried about this, when you look at this cube only, let's say you are looking at the cube within the Arctic and you make some predictions for the Arctic area by missing what's happening from the cities, what's happening from urban area. We don't see the direct connection if we analyze the climate independently from each other. The relation between urban areas and Arctic is missing, for instance. So that's why probably I'm assuming that we see some titles around all the time, scientists are stunned what, what they see. It's Arctic is melting faster than predicted, global warming is faster than what scientists expected and so on. So these expectations do not meet the reality because we are missing the connection between what's going on in the urban areas, what's going on in wild areas. We need to somehow maybe make a little bit better understanding of the cities, also make better climate models probably to connect the all, all Earth system. also make better climate models, probably to connect the all, all earth system when we are making the predictions. This is how my research questions come up. I'm looking at, is it possible to use satellite data? Of course, for scalability and all the time getting data purposes with a secure way. Is it possible to extract some indicators, climate related indicators from urban areas? First of all, for the climate adaptation of cities. But also if it's possible to make some innovative AI models instead of the current grid based climate models, can we make an AI model which can maybe show how things are related globally? What's happening in the city may be making eventually impact in Arctic or somewhere else also in ice sheet? Can we make a global model to show all the connections? And finally, can we use also new AI methods like interpretability analysis for understanding what's deriving, what's causing the climate impact of cities? So we can maybe do some changes. So the, we started very simple to look at the climate indicators of the cities. And these indicators are just we grabbed from the European Environment Agency. They propose that it's possible to look at human development index, like how much roads, buildings we have and also the ecological footprint, how much pressure in the environment we have. So those should be kept in some thresholds. We shouldn't develop too much, we shouldn't make so much pressure on the environment. So when we look at the, these two indices, the green area is the desired place, well being area. So we've got here enough development, but also less environmental pressure. So we've got good living conditions with our roads, connections, buildings, but also we've got green areas to sustain our wellness. This green area you see, this is empty. And these all data points you see are EU states, EU member states. As you see, sorry, these all are the countries and the red ones are EU member states. As you see, in EU, we've got quite well developed areas, but we've got also so much pressure on the environment. And all around the world, you see, none of the countries are falling into a green area where the development is good and also the environmental pressure is not so much. So how, how do we keep this balance? When we develop much, you see the environmental pressure just higher, higher enough. And we, we cannot really keep the well being of our planet like that. So these two indicators here inspired us and we thought we can also extract them from satellite images. We just proposed that starts simple for the observing the environmental stress. We looked at just the vegetation index of the area from satellites. Maybe you're familiar with extracting the vegetation index, the greenness index here. And also the buildup area index, how much development man made constructions there are in the area. So these are simply extracted from Sentinel data, so simply. And it allows us to do it globally, not only one small region, but we can do this in this analysis and we can draw the same map. And also, since the data is collected every week, we can also observe in time whether the country is becoming more aligned with the well being living or not. And after extracting these indexes, not only observing the indices, we also thought about can we use these indices somehow to propose new climate models using AI? So what we proposed, it's more details are in my archive paper that you can reach by searching the title below. I was inspired from white and deep models. Here, what's the, what I proposed is that when we look at, for instance, a city indicators, we are only extracting them in the local area for one city. Assume that you remember, remember the climate models extracted from a grid. You assume that is, this is are extracted, recognized from one grid only, from only looking at the city. But from the white side of the network, also connected to other climate model parameters from all other grids. So in this way, the model learns how to make prediction, not only the using the local in this information, but also together with what's happening in the Arctic, what's happening in the oceans, what's happening in the southern hemisphere even. So you combine all information in one network and the network can also learn the impact of which grid is making the most impact to, to my city. Maybe the city alone is important, but the other grids are less important. But model can learn which grids are making the most impact. So in this way, it's possible to make a climate model which combines the whole earth system at one time. So that's, of course, needs to be tested further, but that's what we are assuming at the moment, at this virtually seems like promising. And furthermore, to ensure sustainability, we talked about with my new paper, with my colleague Ricardo, it's recently published in Nature. We proposed using interpretability methods to identify what's causing these indices to change and how can we act on it? This ensures two things, sustainability of two things. One is development of better AI models because if we explain what indices the model is learning and making decisions on, if it doesn't look like promising, we can also propose that maybe we need to retrain our neural network and we can sustain the, we can just ensure the sustainability of AI model with interpretability. And also if our models, we see that they are reliable by what interpretability we applied and what it tells us, just pointing out what indices are making the most impact on the models, for instance. We can also just determine, for instance, some actions. These resources, I don't know, maybe roads are making the most impact to this model. Then maybe we need to reduce the traffic, for instance. Just we can make that a bit more specified action goals if we apply interpretability on the indices. So this was inspired, first of all, there, there was a work from Jean et al. And they mentioned that it's possible to use deep learning models to identify poverty. So which areas are poor, which areas are not? And they said this supports, of course, one of the STGs, STG one, no poverty goal. So we were inspired by looking at this and of course, we are looking at the climate impacts, not poverty impacts, but why not the similar identifications can be applied to STG thirteen climate action goals as well? Furthermore, we, we've seen in other studies that they've taken the Jean's work and they applied interpretability on the model, showing that that's, we can even explain why poverty areas are the poverty areas. And they also proposed that they can even simplify the CNN model with a symbolic equation and the symbolic equation parameters can help to identify what indices are really showing the poverty. So we are inspired by that and we, we thought that if this can be done poverty, this can be also done for the climate indicators that we are extracting. Why not, after extracting the climate related indicators from cities, we can also just use, use the similar symbolic equation? And we can use the symbolic equation parameters to identify what regions are really contributing to climate indices in decision making? Is it the roads, is it the buildings, is it the city parks or forests? So we can really identify what's, what, what are the most important parameters? This can help us hopefully to support the STG goals better because we can translate the symbolic equation to an action at the end. If the roads are causing this, then maybe reduce the traffic, maybe support different transportation methods. If the buildings are causing most of the impact, then maybe we need some building energy transition or insulation methods and so on. So identifying the real impact with interpretability methods can also be turned into an action within the STGs. So we used all the AI and interpretable AI models to support climate models, to improve them and to improve the climate adaptation of smart cities as well. But yeah, these are all related to AI models, needs to be tested. And yeah, we are not forgetting that all models are wrong, but they can be hopefully useful. I want to end up my talk by proposing also some actions and some further focus of mine, that's further thought of mine and further focus of mine in my research within the built up areas. I'm thinking that I'm proposing that also I see some relevant work in the literature, still investigating further. It might sound counterintuitive, but it seems like it might be true. Urban areas might be potential areas for the highest biodiversity density. I, I know it's, it sounds like, I mean jungle should be the highest biodiversity density, not urban areas, but it seems like it's possible to make our cities the most biodiversity areas. You know what? Besides cities, we've got agriculture areas where we need to grow food or we've got forests. And generally, in our forest, at least in my area in North Europe, and there are one kind of trees, one kind of species. Or if you look at agriculture area, it's generally monoculture. Only one type of crop is growing in a very big area. In such an area, even though it looks like more nature density, it's difficult to assume that there will be more biodiversity density because of having one kind of species, one kind of crop or one kind of tree is growing in one area. There will be only a specific kind of bugs and birds in that area, but not all variety. Why not? It's possible that's also some references also that I'm being seen. We can make our cities more biodiversity areas, even from jungles, having more biodiversity than jungles, I believe, if we really want to. Because we can make edible parks. What does mean edible parks? Just planting berries, bushes, apple trees, cherry trees that we can just eat and the insects can enjoy. Butterflies, birds can also feed themselves, enjoy. That's also very important for our STG, for security, food security purposes, to improve the air quality within the city and improving our wellness, happiness within the city. We can make edible parks, we can make edible forests, we can use our building faucets to make green faucets. Everybody can put flowers in their windows and you use their gardens to put various vegetation. We can make green roofs with growing food, for instance. That assume that it's impossible to not have just the biodiversity. It will be quite biodiversity rich area. And hopefully, we will improve the indicators that these urban heat islands are making impact in our climate to change everything. I mean, changing the city might change all the climate predictions. I believe that's what I'm focusing on. So thanks a lot for listening. If you've got questions, I will try to answer.
Thanks a lot, Beryl. This was really interesting and inspiring and provocative, if I may, dare to, yeah, pushing, pushing us to think a bit further, yeah, what, what can be done? I'm, I'm happy that, of course, being here at ESA, Earth Observations are, are definitely a key resource for this type of studies. And we're really, really happy that all the missions that we put out there, not just from the Sentinels, but also from the Earth explorers that have already produced decades of, of very valuable information about all the earth system and all the different spheres that interconnect and, and interact with one another are put to good use. So thank you so much. This was, this is really interesting. Again, for the attendees, if there are any questions, just paste them in the chat. Terry, if you're, if you're here with us, I would move on to your presentation. I don't know if you're, if you're muted. Yes, I think that you're muted. Maybe just Terry just wanted to get a cup of coffee. We were a bit ahead of, ahead of schedule.
Hey guys, hi, Anka. And the rest of the attendees here, I am trying my best to get my camera working.
Okay.
So I hope it's going to work out in a few minutes. But without further ado, you know, watch the presentation from that wonderful gentleman from JPL and, and Beryl's work is also pretty inspiring. I did listen through, so I have not been absent. I, I spent my, I'm going to try my best to turn the camera on. I just put my laptop away from a big screen, you know, that shared screen and it's kind of acting a little funny. But I want to keep you guys excited in terms of the presentation that I have prepared. It's going to be a little bit interactive. But obviously, before you get anxious that who is this guy? I'll try to share my LinkedIn picture. So hopefully you get to sort of familiarize with who I am. Is that, is that okay, Anka?
That's perfectly fine, yes.
Perfect. So let me just try to see how to share my screen and if this works.
Yeah.
Apparently it's showing the whole screen or can I, or is it just the Chrome browser?
It's showing just the browser page, so just your LinkedIn profile.
Right, right. So this is, this is me. So my name is Terry. I'm a CEO, co-founder of a few companies. One is a research lab called DK AI Lab. I also have, we also run another company called Real AI Incorporated or BV as we call it in Dutch or BFA. I'll just give you a little bit of an introduction of how we work. And then I have two interesting use cases, which I, it's actually showing you actually under the hood of two climate AI projects that we're working on. We have not officially launched that company, but so you get a little bit of a preview. So if you're sitting in, don't, don't, you know, take my word for it. We are still, you know, working on that product. And do please not share the links because they're still experimental. So once we launch and go to the market, that should help you get familiarized with what we are doing. So just to give you a bit of a perspective of who we are. So this is our lab and me together with my researchers. So we have various backgrounds, you can take a look at it yourself. So I hope this is going to help you get a bit of a perspective. But let's just focus on the research part of things. I hope the screen is still visible to all of you. We do research in several areas, so it could be energy efficient, creating sort of miniaturizing models into small chips, miniaturized chips. This is a project with one of my researchers did, together with another researcher here in Dalt in the Netherlands. And we obviously focus on a lot of other interesting research areas such as healthcare. So this is, you could just go to the page, take a look at what we do. And also obviously seismic, so we try to understand Earth, but also other sort of data sets that we are constantly collecting. So this is about Earth. So this is about Earth, uh so seismic data in trying to understand, you know, drilling. And, and we're also very interested and excited in the data that currently Rover is collecting from Mars. And we'd be more than excited to actually start doing the research there as well. To, to try to see how terraforming probably potentially could look like and eventually mining as well on that planet. So this is a bit of a research. Uh we also invent um models and architectures. Um for instance, this is a generative model. One of our researchers created this model. Um and it's all about dynamic linear flows. It's like an advanced version of a GAN, which is generative adversarial network. So you maybe may have, may be aware of it. So this gives you a bit of an idea on, on the sort of the breadth of our research that we do. Uh we are on our way to, sort of obviously, we've been there for a couple of years. And this is the new sort of platform which we'll be launching in the next couple of uh, next couple of days. So this gives you a bit of an idea. So once we move our research ideas, whether inventions, whether we're developing algorithms or, or models, we ship those ideas to uh uh Real AI, which is more of a sort of a, you know, enterprise sort of, you know, cousin of, of, of Deep Cafa Lab. Um and, and what happens here is we try to put these ideas into venture. So I'm just gonna talk about Green Scan, which is what this whole thing is all about. And uh so the venture projects, they just tell you a little bit of a history, so it gives you an idea of the kind of project that I'm talking about. So this is basically one of the research we want, it's an award winning research um from European Union. Um and here we were awarded this project last year in order to understand the, you know, how to combat climate change with respect to flooding, with respect to forest fires, with respect to uh, you know, storm intensities, with respect to uh air quality. So in this research, which is concluded and will soon publish this um paper as well. Uh you know, trying to identify ramp uh event predictions. How can we uh, you know, advance and create forecasting models uh to predict storms and floods? I will show you one of the tools that we have developed in, in which we uh talk about, uh you know, understanding storm intensity and speed of those storms, et cetera. So it's a very fundamental, basic model, but I'll give you a little bit of a perspective of what that is. Uh and obviously trying to understand and worked in order to create a hybrid solution for energy uh players in the market is super important for us to do this. Uh from theoretical, obviously, we wanna come uh and create solutions that are market ready. And, and the, the, the key sort of uh purpose of this research was also to try to see whatever that we are doing research, does it have? And who are eventually the potential uh subs- uh beneficiaries of, of these models? So obviously insurers are, are definitely, you know, today being uh bombarded with all kinds of uh climate AI problems that are out there. And trying to re- uh reassess their asset uh and reassess their portfolio in understanding how to serve uh consumers as well as enterprises. Uh and this applies to all other sort of constituents, you know, real estate brokers as well, understanding how can we sort of protect uh our um estates uh from all these climate changes that are happening around us. To energy companies who obviously are the center of this storm, if you will. And, and they are trying to understand how to sort of move uh in, in that direction. So this is how this project was born. And uh and here is sort of the platform that we are currently developing. So this is um, uh this is under the hood, as I just mentioned. And I hope uh here I can share with you some interesting things that we have developed. So, so typically, uh the, the whole idea of this project is uh solar panels and, and trying to understand. So right now there, we are collecting a lot of data. So we have, this model is based on a data set that had uh approximately a hundred thousand infrared images. And, and we have this, uh so we are currently sort of, you know, collecting information, also using all kinds of um external factors such as satellite images, but also using, um you know, aircraft, uh images using aircraft flying on top of those solar farms. To uh having unmanned aerial, uh you know, for example, from um up to fifty meters or perhaps even, you know, a hundred meters high. Um you know, advanced enterprise robots um or drones are flying over and taking images of these um, you know, the solar farms and also on, on the consumers who've been buying these platforms. So essentially, so this is still under development, so I'm just gonna jump right into uh sort of the topic itself. Uh and hopefully this gives you a bit of a perspective of what I mean by this. So as you can, as you know, that the, the solar, um uh which is, you know, photovoltaic um, um energy is growing rapidly. Uh today, um I think it's already crossed five hundred gigabytes or gigawatts, my apologies, of solar energy capacity in the world. And today, you know, we're experiencing um yearly growth of a close to thirty percent, which is actually dramatic. Um but as you can imagine, as, as you start seeing mass production of all these solar panels or photovoltaic cells, uh the, there's a lot of, a ton of faults, uh you know, where, you know, maybe that are caused in manufacturing of those equipment. For example, um you know, uh as a solar panel is shipped by a manufacturer, it tends to uh already have that two percent uh of uh decrease in its effectiveness. So essentially, you're taking a ninety-eight percent efficient sort of a solar panel, putting it on top of the best sort of location that you would want to. So that already is a kind of like a little loss you have in manufacturing. Transportation, installation and maintenance uh tend to cause a lot of problems. So this is what I'm gonna be talking about in, in, in this, uh and, and doing a demo with this tool. And I hope it helps you understand a little bit. We've also conducted a new sort of, I, we have supervised a master's thesis where uh we've done a um, um, research that's gonna be published, by the way, in the end of this year in uh one of Springer's publications. Uh where we've gone and spoken to all these solar manufacturers, energy companies, to try to understand what their challenges are, especially in, in adoption um uh of, you know, creating predictive models. But also how to understand if I can use AI to, to actually make these things better and reduce loss, right? That's the whole idea. So these are basically the module that you're seeing in this image here is um essentially an infrared solar module. And um I'll just sort of quickly go through the data set. So as you can see here, uh there are a couple of sort of things that, and, and for me as well, a year and a half ago, uh since I'm not an expert in, in solar panel production, it was strange to me. So just quickly go through these, uh each individual classes. So there's are twelve classes that were developed, um, um, you know, based on the in- information that was collected. So all in all, the data set has, you know, close to a hundred thousand, out of which we have uh down selected the data set of twenty thousand images. These are four, uh twenty-four by forty, if I remember correctly, pixels each. And, and these are the twelve classes. So for example, cell, so cell is basically, what does cell mean? It means basically a hotspot occurring uh with a square geometry inside a cell, inside a single cell, that photovoltaic cell. And then you have a cell multi, so hotspots, um you know, when you have, you know, start taking the square geomet- geometry of a grid of two uh two by two cells or four by four uh sort of cells. Uh cracking is basically sort of an anomaly, you know, caused by cracking the modular surface. It happens a lot. You might not be able to see it with your, with your, you know, uh bare uh eye or the naked eye. But these cracking also tend to happen, uh not, not obviously during installation, but also during the course of time, if you have hailstorms, et cetera. And diode essentially basically means is an activated bypass diode. So it's typically a third of, of a module. And then you have multi-diode, uh and, and hotspot, for example, is also important and interesting to know. So you have, sort of, you know, having a hotspot on a thin film module versus a, a multi-hotspot, which is having uh, you know, multiple hotspots on a film module. And, and things like soiling um and vegetation um or also things, as you can imagine, depending on which condition and where you have your uh solar panels and these solar farms installed. Uh you definitely need to take attention of lot of that as well. For examples, you know, panels uh that are blocked by vegetation. Uh and then you have soiling, uh so dust, debris, all kinds of stuff that is happening on your panel. So just kind of taking in, uh into this data set, that's test data set that we have created on this platform, which is, uh you know, we're still working on it. Uh in this case, I have uh, I, we already have it at the backend. We have sort of, uh you know, put it up on a simple platform, it's a service of past platform. And let's see if I pick up a vegetation, as you can see here, um you know, it's gonna show you the influencing time. And then it's gonna, you know, go through uh the data sets. So since it's a really based, uh put on, um, as you can see here, vegetation nine percent. You know, cell twenty-six percent shadowing sixteen percent anomaly. If I pick something else, um I, I, let's try to see if we can pick up soiling. Uh then you have here as well, so no soiling in this case. Or if they pick up a diode or cracking, for instance, it's gonna show you that as well. You could potentially also upload an image if you click on it. Uh but like I said, you know, right now we are still working internally to improve this model. So if it, uh you know, once we release it, we're obviously gonna be talking with um, um a lot of uh vendors out there. Um manufacturers, um the companies, large enterprises that are, that own solar farms to actually take this and eventually help us improve and make this model better. So the couple of things that uh you see in this sort of data set that we have collected for the solar platform. Uh they're all uh basically, uh you know, the data represented from the real world. So these, these are images that were taken by uh a, a company in US called Raptor Maps. And they collected the data using all kinds of um images that were, you know, taking piloted aircraft and all to, uh all the way to, you know, even unmanned aerial vehicles, as I just mentioned. And, and essentially, uh, uh, you know, they had a, uh, image resolution varying between three to fifteen centimeter uh per pixel. And the anomalies would eventually cropped uh of the, you know, to the individual module and separated into these classes that you can see. So just wanted to show you these. I thought this would probably help you get a little bit of an interactive view. Uh it's still launched on a very small sort of platform with which we are uh today developing. Um so I hope this gives you a bit of an idea on, on our motivation to do this. Obviously, we are also trying to combine other features into this. So these are typically, these are typically features uh that, you know, constitute, there are a lot more, by the way. Uh but they constitute to what, what is, uh and how do you do predictor, prescriptive and descriptive uh you know, services and provide those services to your consumers. Uh but our goal is also to start looking at sort of um data, uh satellite data as well. Now jumping to the satellite data, probably the next use case, which I hope uh you will also appreciate is, is something which you're working on. So we're working on a bunch of other models as well. Um so this is still, you know, uh a platform on the development and we have um so for example, this is the product that I just kind of showed you. So we're gonna be doing a lot of, uh for instance, um renewable energy, uh weather event, uh weather event prediction and, and air quality. But let me just sort of take you to the uh, uh weather event prediction uh of this platform. Uh so let's see. So here, so uh this is also a very interesting project, actually was launched by um uh one of the uh challenge, data challenge platforms, which one of our researchers uh picked up and downloaded the data set. So we had, we said, okay, let's try to see if we can uh develop a model that could eventually uh predict the storm intensity. Um so here, uh essentially, the whole idea is to be able to uh predict the cyclone or storm intensity, so creating an estimated estimation system. And here, uh for instance, uh I, I had um uploaded this image, but I can do it live for you. I just, I believe, for instance, if we were to, for example, here, you can predict the speed of these uh, the storms. And basically predicting the speed of the eye of the storm. So I was looking at some satellite images here and I was just trying to see if I can download one of these images. Uh let's say this one, I guess. And I'll just try to see if I just copy it on my desktop. Yes, I think I was able to. Yeah. And what I'm gonna do is, I hope you can still see my screen, um gonna go and if I refresh this page. So this is the prediction actually it is making. I just wanted to give you guys a, a live overview. And here you can see essentially the speed of the storm. Let me just show you this way. I'm not, I'm not able to upload the um image right now. So it still takes a little bit of a while, uh since we are still have, uh you know, not so advanced uh infrastructure as a service platform like Amazon or Google. And we are trying to move this to that platform. So for example, it's thirty-nine knots here. And if you move this, so essentially what we are trying to do is not only be able to predict the speed of the storm that is already out there. Because obviously, as you can imagine, that does not really solve the problem. So just to give you a bit of a perspective, as you know, you know, besides about a hundred, a thousand of, you know, uh upward of a thousand deaths happen from a single event, from a single, single storm event. Uh worldwide, there have been more than a hundred thousand deaths across the world. So um the whole idea is to try to provide the insurers with some predictive capabilities before a storm is reaching the shores. And as you may have seen, the last two, three years, the storms have been consistently hitting uh even the European shores. In twenty eighteen, if I remember correctly, Storm Ciara, C I A R A, I believe, uh was, uh kind of had a damage worth of a couple of hundred million euros only for the Dutch uh, uh population. And, and but the, the losses ran into billions, we were talking about the storm. And this year as well, as you can see, the climate is heating up and, you know, it's, it's going a little bit haywire. And, and trying to uh, uh, you know, understand and optimize your portfolio. But let me just try to see if I can, I was trying to make my camera and apparently it's working now. Let's see. Still not able to put this. Let's just take, go into here. And now, never mind, I'm not able to turn my camera on. But nevertheless, so the whole idea is to be able to make the predictions before time. So even imagine if the insurers were able to uh predict uh and be able to, you know, uh essentially understand how to optimize portfolios and, and also give advisory services towards their customers, consumers, homeowners, but also uh let's say, you know, large companies. For example, this storm, uh the, 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 the possibility of having unexpected hail storms or, or many uh mini- miniaturized flood events i- is, is high in this region. And advising your customers uh beforehand to be able to care, provide them those capabilities would be fascinating. So uh this is the bit of a couple of things I just wanted to share with you guys. Um I'm gonna try to stop sharing and, oh yeah, I guess my video, I think I can turn it on. Um I hope you guys can see me. I'm not sure if it's still working. Um just wanted to kind of summarize this and um you guys still cannot see me, right? So I have no idea what's
No, we cannot see you, but, but don't worry, we hear you very, very well.
No, uh all right. Uh my apologies for this. Um so I guess, yeah, there I am. So I can see myself. I hope you guys can see me as well. So um the whole idea of these, uh the research that we're doing um and, and, and the startup that we are about to launch in the next couple of weeks. We're talking with institutional leaders as well. In the Netherlands, we are participating in a bunch of projects, including the Dutch AI Coalition. Um and the whole idea is to, to try to provide a platform, a dashboard, that is gonna give you the capability to uh to find the transition between the volatility that you have in the climate events, which we are essentially just, you know, still uh creating reactive services. As in, oh, the storm has happened in, in the southern part, southern region of Netherlands and Germany. Um as you all may have noticed, um the damage to uh, to the housing, but also to the community was devastating. It was unfortunate because uh, you know, there are some projects already online, we know, where you know, through satellite imagery, you could actually start looking at the formation of floods before they become floods and before they start flooding into, into region and actually pouring down into those regions, which may not be even closer to sea level. Uh but they have their, you know, they are suffering from internal floods. So the hot So the hot, our our, our whole idea is to actually understand these ramp prediction events. Um, and we're constantly publishing our research. Uh, as I mentioned, end of the year, we'll have a few research coming up in in various publications and including the research projects that I just spoke to, Project Kylie, which has turned into, you know, this multitude of these little projects. Project Solar was essentially to us, uh, came as an accident because we realized that it is okay to start providing ramp uh event predictions. But it is also i- important to inform the consumers on the responsibility of trying to start, you know, uh, figuring out how to actually uh, in the most efficient way, utilize the solar panels that we're using. And today we are talking about all kinds of ways to 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 heat up our homes as we enter winter in the, you know, north, northwestern region of the world. You know, thermal, uh, you know, heating, et cetera, con- concepts have been popular, at least in the region of Netherlands or a bunch of other countries in the north. Uh, but our, you know, how to sort of try to make sure that we are able to understand predictions on one side and using AI as a bridge in order to advise consumers, homeowners, business, uh, uh, large businesses and also manufacturers as to how to actually create this energy production while we can continue to sort of move away from fossil fuels and and understand the climate, because we need to understand the climate, because everything that, or most part of the things, except nuclear um energy and a couple of other sort of areas where alternative fuels uh might be dependent on uh on, let's say, you know, uh, the forests or or other sort of, you know, uh, solutions, we are dependent uh in terms of wind, um, solar, um, and and even water, uh, we are extremely dependent on a climate that is becoming extremely volatile. And so understanding those events and translating these into energy solutions to provide and to 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 the to the to the consumers um with their consumption needs is what our goal is. And I I know why this examples are a little bit, you know, moving too fast. Uh, so, you know, uh, these individual projects that we've been spending the last like six months kind of developing these towards creation. Um, it's a very exciting project for us because we are trying to understand how to sort of help um uh the manufacturers in order so they can expand their footprint. Um, and in the coming months, we'll be developing uh prescriptive and predictive maintenance services, allowing consumers, homeowners to to become more conscious about their energy consumption, knowing that the climate is is uh where they can rely on the predictive services to be able to, you know, um, potentially use more green energy as compared to uh their current energy needs where today, obviously, as you can see, the spike in oil price prices and gas prices is leading us towards, um, you know, our over reliance to gas because most of the systems and infrastructures are or and the grid is all built, built on the backbone of these um energy systems and how to provide sort of a sustainable transition towards um uh the alternative energies. So I hope these two little projects, uh, solar phot- photovoltaic prediction um system, which we are developing currently, and the storm prediction where not only speed intent, uh, the the speed of the storm, but also potentially estimating the economic damage um uh in regions and going localized. Let's say if a storm normally that storms, as you can, as you know, they tend to hit the 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 UK region and and then start moving towards the northern part of the Netherlands and towards Germany when they start weakening. And and then sometimes they start coming from south, and then you have a regions like Amsterdam hit uh by these storms. And last year was unbelievable, where we saw the first time, uh, we call it a, in, I think in Dutch, we call it a sky pump or or or, uh, you know, huge, uh, sort of a hose event, which was literally sort of picking up stuff and never happened in like thirty years in the Netherlands. And we're all used to seeing those storms in in US. Um, so I think those will be more prevalent. Um, and the best, the better way to understand is is to quantify this information through the eyes of the satellites, through radar, through sonar, and eventually providing these services. I'm very happy to answer any questions if you guys have.
I think it's really great. Um, I don't know if you, if you follow the fee week so far, but uh we had a couple of um very interesting past two days. And um the topic of extreme events and prediction of extreme events, not just detection, and also estimating the impact of extremes that are, we all know that they're growing in intensity or they're going in frequency. Uh, we've seen um a number of um, let's say, uh, starting, well, projects that have have started in our, are now in one year of development that were um financed by ESA on the digital twin earth precursors that help us understand, let's say, the fundamental uh physics and the science that is behind all these phenomena that we're experiencing and to model them um at global scale, of course. And then we'll look at um the series of projects that we will will start um just in in about a month on um on detecting um extreme events, predicting their their impacts, predicting their um manifestations and uh understanding ultimately what is the role also of us as a society on uh contributing to to not only to the generation of these uh of these um extremes, but also to uh growing the impact that they have. And this is, this takes me back to to Beryl's talk on uh on the smart citizen adaptation, climate adaptation, which is really, really important. So um I would just like to to thank you all for uh all these great interventions today. And I really hope that uh the audience took back um the messages, combining all the information that came from the fee week uh from all the AI for EO sessions that were yesterday, that touched on on some of the things that you were mentioning as well, Terry, on predicting where uh the flood is going to occur, where you will have a br- a bridge, uh, a a bridge in in your defense, let's say, uh, systems now. And what what could be the the trajectories of the floods and things like this? So I I do hope that um the audience will go back to the replays uh of uh all this event uh all the week. There's quite a bit of material to go through. Uh, but thank you all for for participating, for being here with us. And I I would just like to give the floor to Beryl for some some final remarks.
Thanks, Terry, and thank you everyone who joined us, all speakers, all listeners. Thanks a lot for joining, for your interest. As Anker mentioned, those are all going to be online, and also they are going to be online on my YouTube channel, if you want to follow. So thank you so much for your attention. I'm so pleased that all of you think about our planet and how to use our tools for making helpful projects. Hope to see you again next time.
Thank you. Have a good weekend. Bye-bye.